Would have some proper to do with plants. So the existing entrance is right here. The area that's in the mall is right here. And the area for the proposed additions is essentially in this area here. There are existing parking areas at the front of the property. Some gravel areas that are there to help with that. Additional parking and a cage area for all of the back. This is where the trucks lower their load for both for delivery and for pickup and waste movement. So the basic traffic pattern on the end is that trucks coming down, three through the woodwork will turn right into the property. They'll loop around through the bathroom here. The bathroom is here, which is where the voting bays are. Once they drop off their materials, they'll then exit out through the nooks. So the general circulation of truck traffic is really this. The same thing happens with the dumpster removal or the trash removal area, which is in this area here. They also exit through the north. On the north side of the property right now is where the indoor tour entrance is. The ambulance do come in on the north side and then they also exit on the north side. So no traffic really goes back up this way except for the general parking traffic that takes visitors and employees and other partners here and here. Under the site management development, what we're looking at is the proposed addition in this area here. The parking area, the entrance would be the same, okay, in this area here. We then have a smaller loop in this area here, basically for accessible parking. You have a sidewalk coming across right at the parking space, which will crosswalk between the building along with some drop-off spots along the facade of the building itself. So that area, you're functioning for that purpose. And then once the drop-offs are done, you can either exit, back up through the central center, or they would go and find a parking spot within the lot itself. If this block could be in full, we provide an access point here to move back to the backup site where there's an additional seven parking spaces here. The total parking in this area is around 325 parking spaces for that part of the project. Okay. Some of the things that we'll be looking at on the project involve utility drainage. So I'm going to go over the utility plan after this. So the drainage is analyzed and reviewed as part of the project, the pre and post-development review. The pre-development goes back to the existing addition plan. We throw a certain amount of rain in this property for storm events that are provided to us by the state government. We analyze that based upon ground cover, soil types, land slopes, et cetera, to determine how much water is coming off the property, developed property and the undeveloped property during what's known as the two-year storm event, the 10-year storm event, the 25-year storm event, and the 100-year storm event. Those four events are analyzed and then what we do is we then take that same modeling system and we incorporate our proposed development into that modeling system. And we basically have the same rainfall conditions analyzed for the two-year storm, 10-year storm, 25-year storm, 100-year storm. At that point, what is happening is because of the increase in impervious area that was to be associated with developments of this sort, we end up with an increase in peak rate of runoff coming off the property at certain design points that we're creating as we do this modeling. What we do to mitigate that is we provide an area for the water to be stored. This is either done with detention basins, retention basins, underground storage systems, underground storage, and infiltration systems. So this is the combination of the underground storage and infiltration. So it provides a peak rate mitigation mechanism that will capture and hold the water back for a certain amount of time before it actually discharges out the pipe side of the system. During that process, a portion of the flow goes out through a subdrain, which is calculated into the overall equations when we're doing the modeling for the system. And an additional portion of that gets recharged back into the ground and that is counted as exfiltration within the drainage model. So most of the drainage that's on the site, pre-developing, comes out to the street here. So this drain line leads straight here that picks up this whole area of drainage essentially and sends it out to the street drains here. So as you can see, that's a pretty good sized chunk of that in there. There's a high point in this area here where a main portion is distributed between this test basin area and these dis- drainage systems on this area here, which incorporates a rain garden. This has a water-clover device currently in place. Under the proposed additions, the, there's going to be a shift in the grade in of the ridges within the site that were regraded lower in the site. So this area here, which was approximately here going to this front drainage, is now being moved to approximately this area here. The rest of the drainage from this side, including the roof drainage, gets into this underground storage system. This entire area here, parking, this area here of parking, including portions of the driveway, get into the system as well. And that's all captured, detained, exfiltrated, and then discharged out of the system. The small portion of this driveway, which is picked up into the test basin, which we're going to end up replacing with like a system that's in this area to make that work. So a portion of it in pre-developing, this might be just regular drainage grass, etc. It goes off. In the post-developing, it's picking it up and it's piping it to the outlet. In all cases, the design points of the project were not increasing peak rates of runoff off the site, which is the mechanism that we have to evaluate as part of our drainage analysis. Just to give you a little more detail on the system itself, essentially, this is a system of molded arch chambers, which is becoming very difficult to get because of supply issues like the arch of bill. So these chambers basically are, they're half-round, if you will, almost like a half-pipe. They're arched and they have an open bottom. They sit on a bed of stone, so they were actually sitting on that and then the surrounding is stone as well. And what happens is the water runs in to the system, for example, this would be the inlet from one side to the other. It runs into this manifold line, gets distributed into each separate chamber. As it goes down, the water then comes in the chamber. It would rise up, okay, because of water coming in faster than it can be exfiltrated or be discharged through the, through the subdrain. And at some point, again, discharged as a developed pipe. And then it'd be exiting out in this right here. And it's only exiting from this one system, so it forces all the water to stay here until there's a availability to get up, to make sure it rises to the right level. That discharge point is located in this location here, which is above the local road which requires a special permit or a new process to have a group of necessary requirements on that side. So the drainage system complies with both the local, state, and federal requirements relative to stormwater runoff. There are other elements to the package that we're adding, including TSS removal devices for water quality. Water quality devices are required to remove, prior to discharge, 80% of the total suspended solids that have developed on the property. There's calculus that we're given to utilize in the spreadsheets, we're given to utilize to, to support these calculations. As part of our drainage report, which the city engineer is either reviewing or will be reviewing, we submit compliance documentation with that information to show him that we're doing the modeling correctly, that we're analyzing the stormwater components correctly. We provide compliance documentation along with stormwater certification for that purpose. So all that information gets filed with the city. They review it as part of this whole site management process. Relative to landscaping on the property, there are two parts to the landscape plan that we're working with. The first part is relative to compliance with the requirement of the amount of landscaping we need to provide on the project. The landscape requirement is based upon the square footage of area of parking lot and maneuvering area. So this one highlights parking spaces in a crosshatch and a maneuvering area, which is the area of lining parking spaces. In all cases, here, a different crosshatch from the dining room. So those areas are then reviewed, summarized upon some square footage they have. And then from there, what we're requiring the parking area to develop is provide a certain number of square feet for every square foot of parking that were utilized on the site. It's 150 to 1 or something like that, or 1 to 150. So the green areas shown in the plan is submitted to the planning board, basically highlight, here's where we're going to count the areas for our landscaping for the project relative to compliance with the requirement as far as it goes under the parking regulations. From there, we show that information. We're also showing the snow storage around the parking lot. Basically, we have the areas along the parking spaces, which we refer to as winter plumbing, which basically puts it into the edge. On larger storms events, we've got areas along the backside and along the side here that can be utilized as, as storage. And in this particular case, when you talk about this at the neighborhood meeting, what will likely happen is as they're plowing the site out after, during the storm and immediately after storm, they would basically be creating larger piles, likely within the parking spaces themselves. The amount of parking that we're providing in the project is about three times what is required by the construction of this particular facility. The casualties come out to be about 63 spaces. We're adding an additional 166 spaces to the overall project. So during the storm event, you know, within a day or so of that storm event being completed and the cleanup being done, they'll then start hauling snow away and removing from the site, which then will have to be disposed of at the appropriate location. So that's the landscaping and the snow removal. There's also a lighting claim that's required to be submitted. And it's very hard for me to see this from there. But the basic premise is that at the end of the property lines, that we have, we have zero or little light intrusion off the property outside of our zone of where we're providing lighting. This also gets reviewed by the planning department as well as the city engineer for compliance. We feel that this, that this method works for compliance. I actually have the light itself, which I believe was not submitted, so I wanted to just show the board the actual light here. The reason I want to show this is because there's also on the backside of the light, there is a light shield component that goes along with this. And the light shield component basically makes it so that if the light is facing the parking lot this way, there's a shield here that basically blocks the light from going backwards towards the street, which is, which is part of the requirement. So depending upon where the light is and the height of the light and the elevation of the light relative to the grade, the light shield is provided as a mechanism to be able to direct the light where it's supposed to go versus where it's not. So the other landscape plan that gets developed as part of the project is the planting plan versus the actual compliance documentation. So at the neighborhood meeting, we talked about, about the ability to build a rather robust landscape screening along the front and along the butters that are near the south of the property because of this access drive. Some of the board members were there to view this and one of the things that we discussed at the meeting was potentially the ability to widen this out to a, to a, you know, another 10 or 15 feet. One of the things that we talked about was at that time, the information I had with me, I didn't have the dimension of these islands right here. So this is nine feet and this is 11 feet. I personally don't like going below eight feet for an island because I think if you try to landscape an island on four feet, it never works. It ends up getting, all the plants end up getting killed. The, the, the snow piles on them just don't even work. So what we're, we're trying to do, what we're providing or proposing is to have a very robust landscape screen along the front and to leave these two islands the way that they are. This would still be the 20 feet that we talked about at the meeting last week. Now, on top of this, I've had a conversation with the planning director relative to what's there now. And right now, what's there now is a stockade fence along the front, which provides, the landscaping provides the beauty and that's kind of what we're looking for. The fencing would assist in providing light screening from cars. So if you had a solid wall fence, even if it's only a three-foot-high fence, on the inside of the, of the parking area, okay, away from the snowplow, basically, you would end up being able to block the lights of the cars coming in at night. And you, the neighbors would be looking at the landscaping along the frontage instead of looking at the parking lot. So that's the intention of what we're going to do with this. This is the preliminary plan. We wanted to make sure that there weren't any changes to the site layout, either per the city engineer or per town peer review. So we wanted to present this. I've given Trevor a copy, but I can get you an electronic copy as well, Trevor, to put up on the website. But basically, what this, what this plan highlights is basically shade trees. I'll read what he wrote. Shade trees, flowering trees, coniferous trees, large shrubs, perennial ground covers, ornamental grasses, lawn, and steep slope planting, low seed mix. So this is the preliminary plan. We're going to sit down with the town engineer and the director, go through additional features that should or could be added to enhance. We're doing one, one item being the fencing.
Yes, and that settling basin is what's shown on the, probably on this landscaping right there.
Yeah, there's a spillway on that and, you know, that's, that's, that's kind of belting suspenders. Typically, we would just put a riprap pad and let it go out of that, but in this case, provide that extra, being able to capture any additional flows that come out and run in to reduce any erosive possibility. We figured we'd have that component.
Thank you.
Mr. Hannigan, on your planting plan, if I'm reading the scale right on the large-scale drawing we have over here, so that, that buffer against the lawn avenue, that's, looks to be about 30 feet deep? Or am I reading the scale wrong?
It may be, it may be, I know we set the parking 20 feet off of the front line, okay? Because that's the requirement. There may be room between the sidewalk, back sidewalk, there may be additional grass area, but we'll probably leave that as it is, which will, will basically, just to be clear, this whole section's going to get rebuilt along the frontage. So it's going to be a brand-new sidewalk and new curving to start off. When the sidewalk ends, we'll either have mulch plantings or mulch going up into the, into the planting. And, but the planting, the planting depth we need by code is 20 feet. We may have 22 or 23 or 25. I don't, I measured it from where the sidewalk is. The sidewalk may, may not be up against the layout line. So I don't know the exact number, but it's, it's greater than 20 feet.
Okay. Thank you.
And if there's another, oh, just as a point, if I go back to the existing addition plan, one thing I'm beginning to note of is that the existing parking area in this area here is actually forward of the 20-foot requirement that's allowed by the zoning. So we're advocating the existing parking and pushing it back to meet the requirements in the zone.
Anything else from board members? From staff?
Just a couple of questions for you. I know we spoke about this a while ago, but, and this may be more directed towards the hospital. Are there any new processes or lab space in the addition that's going to require free treatment for the sewer?
We're not submitting any.
I don't believe so, no. There's no lab space. It's surgical space.
Yep.
The lab space is in the existing building, that doesn't change. And then medical office space, and there's no, there's no lab work anywhere.
Okay, and the sewer is going to the same sewer that's utilized by the building right now?
We're going to put some connection to the same sewer line that's there, correct. One question I did need to touch base with you is regarding the water. One of the meetings, we heard that there are two different water pressures in this area? So we'll just have to get together and determine what water pressure we're working with relative to fire protection, just to make sure we have that.
Yeah, my understanding is the hospital would have a high value on the high system. So they're, the similar pressures, like they fall on a high service.
Let's, let's, we'll get together and find out what we need for a park tech.
Second, could you speak a little bit to the maybe number of trips generated or what you see as an increase in traffic or visits?
We haven't done a traffic analysis on this as part of the submittal. When we went to the development review committee meeting, we did talk about traffic and the consensus there was that it's more of a, it's more of a parking issue than it is a traffic issue. That being said, you're not the first person, you're the second one to ask that question. Trevor's asked me that question as well. So we are, we are actually engaging a traffic engineer to provide some information relative to the IT values for the estimate.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful, just to get an understanding of what they're looking at for this.
And, and we even talked to the hospital about the fact that because of the fact that they're going to have better facilities and better services, there will be likely an increase in the amount of cars coming to the site. But at least now we have room to have them park.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. That's all from me here now.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few things. Bill, you spoke about how the drainage system works on site. Can you speak a little bit to the maintenance plan for these?
Yeah, it's a cooperation maintenance plan.
How often it has to be maintained, the maintenance and reports generated.
So that's, that's in the big book that Chris has. But basically, most of this, most of the structures are inspected on a quarterly basis with many of them being maintained as needed and then others are inspected and maintained on an annual basis. And then, once, once, there are certain components that are inspecting longer than that, so there's a whole schedule that's out there.
Is that a third-party inspection bill or is that done in-house?
It would be typically inspection by a third-party. So the third-party would be, there are more and more companies that are coming available to do these inspections. We can do them as the engineer, but typically, they're done by, like a company like Whitewater or Small Stormwater Services or that SSSS company. Those companies do these types of inspections and they'll provide maintenance and information and maintenance along with that.
Do you know if that's submitted, or Chris, this might be a question for you, is that submitted to the city?
Yeah, actually, as part of our new federal NIPD superment, developments like this are required to submit those annual reports to us to show that they did their, perform their own M tax.
As part of the MS4 stuff?
Yeah.
At the hospital community meeting, the director of facilities did emphasize using a third-party to do that inspection and maintenance. Do we call that, right, Steve?
A new access point at the south of the site. I thought I heard at the developer review committee meeting back in the day that that was being proposed as a one-way into the site for truck traffic. And since it's going to be a loop around.
I don't, I don't know if we made any specific references to that, but that did come up at the neighborhood meeting. And in, in looking at the whole site, it doesn't make any sense for it to be anything but that. It doesn't warrant us to do that now, but that's a problem. We can add that to the plan and that can be part of the whole idea shift. Right now, there is a hundred-foot wide rotation of traffic around the site. This can continue to be in and out. This will be entrance only. We could add signage here, say right turn only, one-way, you can add all that type of signage.
Maybe we, we work that island a little bit to kind of get cars to go to the right, you know, even that part.
Oh, right here?
Yeah. You know, saying it's kind of like maybe it'll bump up there, to encourage cars to go to the right.
Yeah.
Because if you leave it that way, people are going to turn.
Like a dedicated right turn lane, like we did up at Timpani.
Yeah, similar, yeah. So if it's a one-way, does it still need to be 28 feet width?
We do because of the truck training, as trucks command. Yeah, I asked Chris about that today. We are going to take another look at it. If we, it might be that we could open up this curve a little bit here and, and narrow that down a little bit. And it might be that we can narrow it down as we improve here a little bit as well, just to, the intent is to try to reduce some of the impervious area.
I think signage in that area is going to be important. One-way signage, you want to enter this way, one-way going that way, no left turn.
We can add all that information to the, to the landscape layout plan. That way, it's part of it.
And also signage, a signage plan for the traffic flow throughout the site. I'm sure you guys have thought about that.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Yeah, the signage plan for traffic flow throughout the site. Bill, the, you mentioned that the parking in the rear of the site, I don't think is there right now. It's in the zone A, in that it's new parking that's going to be created. Can you correct me if I'm wrong there? Yeah, yeah. Is that existing parking or is that going to be new parking?
That's, that's existing pavement that's being utilized for truck traffic and other traffic and people do park there, they're just not marked. But what we did was we defined where they were, which is going to be one of our small areas.
So you're not creating any new?
No new pavement.
No new impervious surfaces back there?
Correct. Actually, as part of the engine plant project, this impervious area is being removed and I believe it's going to be all crushed down underneath the.
With the power?
Yep. So there's actually technically a reduction in impervious area in the zone A.
And there'll be no more pavement? Will there be any construction over this area? Or is the pavement?
I have to look at the way you're pointing.
Will there be construction over here? Is the pavement going to be repaid?
Just for utilities, utility connections. I'd have to take a look at the condition of the existing paving to see whether it makes sense to extend, extend the paving. I know we have a water line, sewer line, there's a gas line that's up here, but that's the final location that is not unmarked.
And then the drainage is being upgraded?
Correct.
The drainage in that area is being upgraded?
This is an existing, relatively new water-clover unit, which is being utilized and the flow to that is reduced by what we're doing. Okay? So in the existing, this whole area of paving is flowing down to that now, it's just this area right here.
So there'll be no roof runoff going to that system over here, won't there?
I believe.
I mentioned that roof runoff's going to be going to the, the larger.
All of it? All of it from this addition.
New expansions, okay.
I'm going to confirm that, just to make sure.
It kind of looks here, but this is the landscape plan, so I'm not looking at the site plan, so.
I, I will confirm that.
So I know there's going to be this proposed blast deal on the site. And I know you need to deal with the fire department on that. I don't want to speak to the city engineer, but I think we should probably get a copy of that plan when it is produced, what the blasting plan's going to be, and.
It'd be more towards construction, yeah.
Yeah, any type of, what, what measures are going to be taking place to keep the dust down? I mean, obviously, you're going to have a water truck on site, maybe multiple water trucks on site throughout the whole construction, site work. Not necessarily building construction, but the site work, keeping the dust down.
Yeah, we will have a, as part of the construction set, we'll have a demolition, a, a construction safety plan. a, a construction safety plan relative to phasing as well as construction safety relative to protective fencing and, and construction zones being planned for the project. We've kind of done some a little, a little bit of work on that already, but that's, that's where that would come in and we would have a meeting with, I presume, back with the department heads to go over that prior to construction.
Okay, good. All right, now for the public portion of the hearing, or of the meeting I should say, it's not a hearing. Since we're all in 3D here, if you want to come up and speak for the application, speak against the application, ask a general question, make a comment, just raise your hand and I'll call on you as I see you and come on up to the podium. I saw this gentleman first. Please come up to the podium, give us your name and your street address for the record.
Martin Gray, 205 Woodland Ave.
Go ahead, sir.
I'm sure you're going to bill it, but I still have arguments against. It's, I really consider that a watershed area. I've seen other watersheds, the Quabin for instance, very large area. Even Lemonster and No Town Reservoir is a huge area. Still arguing there are lots of vegetation, all the tree loss, it's going to get hotter. And the way I understood from the last meeting I went to with the hospital was, build it and they will come, is pretty much what I understood. In other words, they may not even get the business they're looking for. There was a movie about that, build it and they have come, feel the dreams. I guess they came for that one, but that sounds iffy to me. And I would like to seen a model of that water system, how it works, when the water goes in and what it does, if there's a small model, the more can have a conceptual visual. And, now that's pretty complicated, so. And the other thing I was wondering about, it's still the water for me really is, now they're diverting the water different directions, it's being filtered. A lot of it's, I guess, is seeping into the ground. And does that affect the level of the water in the lake? Is my question. And.
The, the, the level of the water in the lake is driven more by the outlet of the lake system than it is by groundwater, us adding groundwater or adding water to the ground. And, and city engineers here as well, but basically, the amount of water that we're adding to the ground is de minimis compared to the amount of water that is in the watershed to the lake, okay, or to, to the whole water system. So it, most of the water that we're talking about will end up being part of what we refer to as the moisture content of the soil and very little of it will transmit all the way to, directly to the groundwater itself. But even if it gets to the groundwater itself, it then has to travel through the soil from our site all the way down a hill underground and then lead into the, the lake. And that's, that would take, it's not going to happen in days, it's not going to happen in months, might happen in years.
Yeah. That's what I'm wondering is, where does that water really go when it goes to the ground? There must be, maybe there's a giant aquifer under there, I mean, who really knows?
Well, the intent and the actual regulatory requirement, both on the stormwater management side from DEP and the conservation commission if we're in front of them, as well as from the watershed protection regulations, is to get the water back in the ground. Okay, that's really what they, that's the preferred method, which is why if we're adding more than 20%, we're required to provide the water, the ability to get back into the ground. So the way we're doing it actually is in compliance with the regulations.
Right, the regulations, I'm really not talking about regulations. I'm just talking about the way things work in general. You know, excuse me, the water rains and there's a hill and the water goes down and gets into the reservoir, but what happens now when you do a project like this, it's not the same anymore. It's going to go somewhere else.
Yep, I'm not going to, I'm not going to tell you that it's.
That's the point I'm making. Thank you for helping me with that. The home values, I'm sure it's going to affect my home value. I don't know if there's anyone to argue against that. And I consider myself an environmentalist. And all I see is let's build here, let's build there, let's eliminate these woods and then we're going to turn it into a sand operation and, you know, it's now labeled human development. It goes on and on, single homes, any type of new construction.
People do park there, they're just not marked, but what we did was we defined where they were and this is going to be one of our snow slope areas.
So you're not creating any new?
No new pavement.
No new impervious surfaces back there?
Correct. Actually, as part of the energy plant project, this impervious area is being removed and I believe it's going to be all crushed down underneath the.
With the power?
Yep. So there's actually technically a reduction in impervious area in the zone A.
And there'll be no more pavement? Will there be any construction over this area or is the pavement?
I have to look at the way you're pointing.
Will there be construction over here? Is the pavement going to be repaid?
Just for utilities, utility connections. I'd have to take a look at the condition of the existing paving to see whether it makes sense to extend, extend the paving. I know we have a water line, sewer line, there's a gas line that's out here, but that's the final location that they're not on mark.
And then the drainage is being upgraded, correct?
I'm sorry?
The drainage in that area is being upgraded?
This is an existing, relatively new watercrawling unit which is being utilized and the, the flow to that is reduced by what we're doing. Okay? So in the existing, this whole area of paving is flowing down to that now it's just this area right here.
So there'll be no roof runoff going to that system over here, will there be?
I believe.
And you mentioned that roof runoff is going to be going to the, the larger?
Connected to that.
All of it?
All of it from this addition.
New expansions, okay.
I'm going to confirm that just to make sure.
It kind of looks here like, but this is the landscape plan, so I'm not looking at the site plan, so.
I, I will confirm that.
So I know there's going to be this proposed blast deal on the site and I know you need to deal with the fire department on that.
Yes.
I don't want to speak to the city engineer, but I think we should probably get a copy of that plan when it is produced, what the blasting plan's going to be and.
It'd be more towards construction, but yeah.
Yeah, any type of, what, what measures are going to be taken place to keep the dust down? I mean, obviously you're going to have a water truck on site, maybe multiple water trucks on site throughout the whole construction, site work. Not necessarily building destruction, but the site work, keeping the dust down.
Yeah, we will have a, as part of the construction set, we'll have a demolition, a, a construction safety plan relative to phasing as well as construction safety relative to protective fencing and, and construction zones being planned for the project. We've kind of done some a little, a little bit of work on that already, but that's, that's where that would come in and we would have a meeting with, I presume, back with the department heads to go over that prior to construction.
Okay, good. All right, now for the public portion of the hearing, or of the meeting I should say, it's not a hearing. Since we're all in 3D here, if you want to come up and speak for the application, speak against the application, ask a general question, make a comment, just raise your hand and I'll call on you as I see you and come on up to the podium. I saw this gentleman first. Please come up to the podium, give us your name and your street address for the record.
Martin Gray, 205 Woodland Ave.
Go ahead, sir.
I'm sure you're going to bill it, but I still have arguments against. It's, I really consider that a watershed area. I've seen other watersheds, the Quabin for instance, very large area. Even Lemonster and No Town Reservoir is a huge area. Still arguing there are lots of vegetation, all the tree loss, it's going to get hotter. And the way I understood from the last meeting I went to with the hospital was, build it and they will come, is pretty much what I understood. In other words, they may not even get the business they're looking for. There was a movie about that, build it and they have come, feel the dreams. I guess they came for that one, but that sounds iffy to me. And I would like to seen a model of that water system, how it works, when the water goes in and what it does, if there's a small model, the more can have a conceptual visual. And, now that's pretty complicated, so. And the other thing I was wondering about, it's still the water for me really is, now they're diverting the water different directions, it's being filtered. A lot of it's, I guess, is seeping into the ground. And does that affect the level of the water in the lake? Is my question. And.
The, the, the level of the water in the lake is driven more by the outlet of the lake system than it is by groundwater, us adding groundwater or adding water to the ground. And, and city engineers here as well, but basically, the amount of water that we're adding to the ground is de minimis compared to the amount of water that is in the watershed to the lake, okay, or to, to the whole water system. So it, most of the water that we're talking about will end up being part of what we refer to as the moisture content of the soil and very little of it will transmit all the way to, directly to the groundwater itself. But even if it gets to the groundwater itself, it then has to travel through the soil from our site all the way down a hill underground and then lead into the, the lake. And that's, that would take, it's not going to happen in days, it's not going to happen in months, might happen in years.
Yeah. That's what I'm wondering is, where does that water really go when it goes to the ground? There must be, maybe there's a giant aquifer under there, I mean, who really knows?
Well, the intent and the actual regulatory requirement, both on the stormwater management side from DEP and the conservation commission if we're in front of them, as well as from the watershed protection regulations, is to get the water back in the ground. Okay, that's really what they, that's the preferred method, which is why if we're adding more than 20%, we're required to provide the water, the ability to get back into the ground. So the way we're doing it actually is in compliance with the regulations.
Right, the regulations, I'm really not talking about regulations. I'm just talking about the way things work in general. You know, excuse me, the water rains and there's a hill and the water goes down and gets into the reservoir, but what happens now when you do a project like this, it's not the same anymore. It's going to go somewhere else.
Yep, I'm not going to, I'm not going to tell you that it's.
That's the point I'm making. Thank you for helping me with that. The home values, I'm sure it's going to affect my home value. I don't know if there's anyone to argue against that. And I consider myself an environmentalist. And all I see is let's build here, let's build there, let's eliminate these woods and then we're going to turn it into a sand operation and, you know, it's now labeled human development. It goes on and on, single homes, any type of new construction. And all I ever hear on the news, oh, global warming and I know the temperature's going up, I just know it, I can tell at night it's hotter than it used to be. And when's it going to end? And this just goes on and on. Let's do more, let's build more, let's try to make more money. There's got to be a line somewhere and when the line comes, I don't know what's going to happen then, but it's probably too late. I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. Who'd like to speak next? Name and street address, please.
Mariah Day, 11 Beach Street. I had a couple of questions first. I was curious, I know you talked a little bit today about how the whole water catchment system works, which I really appreciate, I hadn't fully understood it before. For example, you talked more about how sediment is filtered out before the water even reaches that retaining area with the arches. I was curious though about how this system handles, for example, dissolved salts from just regular parking lot maintenance, especially in the winter?
I'm not going to delve into an area that I'm not professionally proficient at, so I, I, I don't know relative to the physical properties and the chemical properties of salt and how that gets addressed in this.
Okay, do you know if it gets addressed at all?
Well, I think anytime you use infiltration, you're, you're taking the water and you're putting it through the best filter in the world and that's the earth. So the salting of, one thing that they will not be able to do on this project because of the fact of, of the sensitivity of the construction of the drainage system itself, they won't be able to sand, okay? Sanding will be, is not even part of the, the process. So what they'll be using is calcium chloride, which is better than typical salting that is utilized in most, not even anymore, a lot of, a lot of the cities are actually getting away from the straight salt and sand application and going more with the calcium chloride. What's the other one that they're using?
Calcium chloride.
Magnesium chloride.
The current portion to use calcium chloride instead of sodium chloride, which we try to keep our drinking water to keep sodium levels lower.
Okay.
But that would make it into the infiltration system and you'd be left with additional chlorides, but we just don't want sodium chloride. That's our goal is to keep that low.
Okay, awesome, thank you. I was also curi-
I didn't hear your question, I know I didn't, I didn't really feel it, there's a gap that I don't know on the chemicals side, but Chris added about the calcium versus, calcium and magnesium versus sodium is kind of the goal.
To some extent, I think I maybe don't have the background for knowing how that would affect, or how that's going to infiltrate into the ground and how that could potentially affect groundwater. I don't think I have the chemical. affect groundwater. I don't think I have the chemical basis for that, but...
Yeah, just from a drinking water standpoint, we're trying to keep the sodium levels lower, and that's why we request they use calcium chloride for de-icing.
Okay, cool, thank you. Um, and then we had, had gotten tossed out at the, uh, neighborhood meeting last week, the idea of whether or not compact spots were going to be an option for this parking lot. Did we ever get some clarity on that?
So the board couldn't even approve that, it's not parazoned in the city.
Okay, awesome.
We did check that out.
Thank you, I was just curious if that had been looked into.
That would help us with the widening of the, uh, the islands.
Yes, it would. Excellent. Um, so yeah, obviously, this is very well planned, very well thought out, and all up to, you know, the appropriate regulations, and it's under review. I do still feel very strongly opposed to having a chunk of this residential historic neighborhood be eaten up by a large parking lot. For a lot of the same reasons that Martin brought up, I'm also concerned about home values and just fundamentally changing the character of this neighborhood that we all call home. Um, so I, I hope that that's something that the boards are taking into consideration. I know the proposed, uh, expansion of the hospital itself is important, um, but we're just not particularly, uh, pleased with the massive parking lot in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
My name is Emma Day, resident of 11 Beach Street.
Thank you.
I just had a quick question that may have already been addressed, I'm not sure. Um, you mentioned that, um, per the regulations for this new addition, only 63 parking spots are required, so I was wondering why then there's almost 150 more spots being proposed?
So, uh, the numbers are 63 and 166, so it's about 100 more, um, which is, that doesn't address your point. Um, the reason why we're adding spaces is because of the fact that the demand of parking on the site, um, is such that the city is, I'm not gonna say that the city's asking for it, but the, the parking demand on the site is higher than what the site can have, can, um, can accommodate right now. Um, right now, there's about 640 or so parking spaces on the entire campus on this side of the road, so not including parking across the street. And with this, um, we'll be bringing that to, um, and it will be increasing that by the 166. Um, there have been studies on this property that says it may need up to 1,000 spaces or 1,100 spaces. Um, the zoning is, is, um, unclear relative to, because we have had this discussion with the building department about whether we, whether we need, whether we have enough parking or whether we need more parking. So what we did on the addition was we said, okay, we have this many square feet of medical office, we have this many square feet of surgical unit, that's how many parking spaces it would require, and we've added the extra part, uh, extra parking because it's a need, okay, more than required. But all of those things are reviewed within the same context of the watershed, within the same context of site plan review. So it's, it's not that those extra 100 spaces don't comply or aren't reviewed as far as, uh, the drains analysis and the landscaping and stuff like that.
Okay. Um, do you know where I might get access to the studies that, um, show that you need this much parking space?
Those are at Hayward, I'm not sure if those are public or not. I mean, it's just...
Okay, thank you.
That's not, that's not mine, that's what I would probably...
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak for or against, or ask a question?
My name is Svetlana Chystakova. I'm a resident owner at 197 Woodland Avenue.
Go ahead, please.
Um, my question today is in regards to, you know, nobody likes to kind of seem or look stupid. It's the third, fourth meeting we're having, we're repeating one thing and after another, that we're against this. Um, pretty much my question is in regards, sorry, I'm not very informed, as to the process of this whole application going. It's taken a toll on people, for us, like these people. It's, I believe, a point worth making. Um, the people here are professionals who are hired and being paid for representing these plans. We are just working, guys, families with kids who cannot attend and really devote that much of, it takes a lot of emotional, um, charge at us. So pretty much, I just wanna get the structure of this. If you would be kind to share with me of, about the process of this, how it goes, and, um, uh, another question connected with this is what, it looks like the whole our life is a big, big upheaval in regards to that. Uh, it's, it looks like we got houses in a single-family residence, and so for them to do this is gonna require to change the zoning, I'm understanding. So us buying properties in single-family zone, what rights do we have to keep this zone as a single-family zone?
So I guess I'll take a shot to start.
Did you want to speak during that any process?
Yeah, and, and so the, the zoning there is never gonna change, it's not gonna change. The zoning will not change. The zoning is still single-family residential one or residential two, whatever, wherever the zones are. It's the use on that land, uh, that's changing. And I, I'm not the zoning enforcement officer, the building commissioner is, so he's probably better to speak to the subject, but I can do my best to try to help you understand, at least the process, and, um, um... They're in front of the zoning board of appeals right now for that use. It's a pre-existing non-conforming use on that property. And they own all that property, so it's under common ownership. So it really is, that campus is the campus, that's the hospital property. Um, so they're expanding a pre-existing non, non-conforming use. That's the zo- that's through the zoning board of appeals, that's a special permit that I believe they opened at their last meeting.
And continue, correct, yeah, continued it.
This right here is site plan review, which is required from the planning board because it is disturbing more than 2,500 square feet on the site. It's, it's, it's an expansion of more than 2,500 square feet of building space. It's creating more than 15 parking spaces on the site. So those criteria, I did trigger site plan review for the planning board. It's a similar process, um, we're approving the same plan, but it's for a different reason. It's to approve everything we spoke about tonight, whereas the ZBA's special permit is to approve that use to pre-existing non-conforming use that is on the site. Bill, I mean, this... And, and, and then the other, just, yeah, so in the other two public hearings that are before the planning board right now, uh, special permits for, one for the microgrid energy project, um, that is out behind the site.
Behind the site, yeah.
They're redoing their energy infrastructure, um, and that public hearing was opened at one of the previous planning board meetings and is still open, and we'll take it back up at the June 13th meeting. And the other special permit is for, um, the expansion project. Because it's, in, in both of them, both the microgrid and the expansion project special permits in front of the planning board are because the site is located within the surface water overlay protection district. It's required as part of the zoning code. Uh, so they, so they need, need to meet the, the guidelines, they need to be in compliance with the surface water overlay protection district in order to be granted those special permits. That's why we have third-party review. We have a, an outside engineering firm that's gonna review all the plans, all the reports that were submitted, to ensure that they comply with that. Um, and they'll be submitted to the city, to myself and the city engineer, and the engineers that are working on the, those other projects, um, for comment and feedback to make sure anything that needs to be done, anything that's being recommended by the third-party reviewer is done in order to comply with the zoning code, the water supply protection over district. And that, that gives the planning board the comfort level where they, you know, they can either approve it or deny, depending on what report comes back to them, assist with the project. Does that kinda give you an outline? I know it's a lot, it is a lot.
Yeah, it's a lot.
It's a lot for even me. I mean, this is the first time I've been through this process too, and it is a lot.
So, sir, you said that, uh, you said that the zone is still gonna be called single-family zone. So in this regards, a question, uh, comes up. So it may be still called a single-family home, but we are gonna have a huge parking lot in our single-family zone. So are there any regulations which govern what the single-family homes supposed to be like and what can be included in them?
There is.
Pretty much.
Yeah, it's within the zoning code, it's in, within the zoning code. And again, I just wanna remind you, I'm not the zoning enforcement officer, the building commissioner is.
I understand.
He's got final determination on all zoning, um, issues, matters within the city. Um, it does remain residential, however, like I said, um, the approval through the zoning board of appeals is gonna allow them to do what they're doing here through that special permit by expanding a pre-existing non-conforming use. I know it's complicated. So, um, you know, that's a great question, I think, to bring back to the, the, uh, the ZBA meeting at their next meeting when they reopen the, the special, uh, the special permit.
The next meeting, which is gonna be when?
July 22nd is what I thought I heard. 28th. 20th, 2-0.
And that's a, I think that's a better form to address this.
So 20th, 22nd, I'm sorry, or 28th?
20, 2-0.
2-0, yes, thank you.
If I may, for the chair, um, to, to kind of enforce what Trevor's saying, before we submit any of our plans, we literally go and sit down with the building inspector, and we say, we wanna do this. By, by the zoning code that the city has, he has to deny us. So he's denied us the expansion, he's denied us for medical, he's denied us the expansion of the hospital, okay, and he's denied us the work that we wanted to do in the watershed. Our, um, step to overcome that denial is to file the special permit for the watershed work with this board, and to file the special permits that we filed with the zoning board of appeals. So that gives us the ability to be heard by the city officials and the city boards as to why we feel our proposal is worth moving forward. The same forum that we do our proposal to the boards allows residents and citizens of the city to come and voice their concerns. So that we're saying, this is why you should do it, the residents are able to say, this is, uh, these are our concerns. The board can then look at those, um, elements, weigh the different factors, and part of this comes into what is the benefit and what is the detriment to both the city and the neighborhood. And that's really where it gets into the balance of the board, uh, being comfortable with what we're doing. You asked about, you said, we're professionals, we're, we do this for a living, I get that. I'm not sure if you understood what, what Trevor was saying relative to peer review. When we submit that drainage report, that Chris has two, there's two volumes, he has one in short with two large volumes of information. Chris Coughlin, who's a city engineer, he reviews it to make sure that we're saying to this board is correct, that we're, we're doing what we're saying we're gonna do, the, the calculations are all worked, they all comply to the regulations, and then he can give his report to this board for them to be able to make a decision relative to particularly that one item, okay, for the drains part. There, there are also elements, now that's really site layout, now site layout, you know, Chris will review relative, does, does the parking, the parking space is the right size, are the aisles between the park in the right width? Is there, is there sufficient, uh, turning radius for vehicles to get in and out of the site? Are there restrictions that they would like us to place on this to make sure they turn right here and don't turn left, okay? Sinage, all those elements come in under site plan review, lighting and landscaping being one of them. So the landscape review gets done through this process right here, okay? That doesn't mean the zoning board can't ask about it, okay, which they already have. That doesn't mean they couldn't ask about some of these other elements as part of the special room for watershed. But the most important part of it is that all of this stuff is reviewed by someone else besides us. We're not involved with the review, okay? The gentleman on the end is a city engineer, and Trevor is the director, he reviews it as well. This board reviews it, and they're also hiring an outside engineering firm, known, it's called Fussman O'Neills, this other company who does the same thing we do, they're gonna check my plans and say, did Hannah and engineering do the right thing on their plans? Is it, does it work both from a, from a regulatory perspective and from an engineering perspective? So everything that we're doing gets checked once, twice by this board and a third time by an independent engineer. So that's the safeguard that's put into place to protect the citizens, to make sure that I'm just, I'm not coming in here and saying, hey, this is fine, okay? And they go, yeah, okay, it looks good to us, and then all of a sudden there's a problem down the road. So it's the, it's the other people that are involved, that are not the board members, that are the secondary check and balance on the, on the protection of, of the, of the, of the public, and that's all what it's about. And this is the forum that you should be expressing these things. This is the only forum that we have, okay? And this is where it gets voiced, this is where the board can hear what your concerns are and say to us, hey, we're concerned about that too, we're, we're concerned about the landscaping, address it. We'd rather have...
So today we're discussing landscaping, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry?
Today we're discussing landscaping?
We're discussing landscaping today, yes. And that's part of what we're presenting tonight. This is not the final landscape plan. We're gonna have some additional reviews of the landscape done, and then we'll come back with a final plan relative to the landscape. But right now, as you can see, there's a lot of vegetation being planted along this facade, along this entrance here, to shield the view of the parking lot, going in either direction, up and down Woodland. And if you, if you notice the, the area where the existing parking lot is now, okay, there's a fence that goes along that to basically block the view of it.
A fence is very depressive, to be honest, even though, even though it saves from the lights, the fence is very depressive.
Right.
As well as the whole thing.
And I don't like fences. I'd rather have the vegetation. So what we're looking at doing is taking the vegetation and putting a fence on the parking lot side of it, okay? So that you look at the vegetation, but you're also protected from the lights with the fence. So you're not staring at a big, massive fence there, which is what you're staring at.
Well, staring is one little thing, it's the quality of our life which I'm mostly concerned. I mean, looking at the parking lot is of course disgusting, but, uh, most people, you know, we do not like to think about how it's gonna influence our lives, health-wise, bringing children, bringing up children. So even though the view is important, and you said that this is a lot of vegetation, we do not agree that this is a lot of vegetation. We are gonna be exposed to very strong winds in the winter, which are protecting us currently. It's another point for, um, environment, how we're gonna have to use much more gas too. There are so many consequences to this little thing here, um, but, um, you've, sorry, you've talked a lot and I can't, I had a lot of points I wanted to make. Uh, so just not to deviate, first of all, from the very first things I was speaking about, um, I'm not sure who to ask this question. Many people tell me that this is not a question for them. I just wanna pretty much know, uh, legal rights. So in this kind of set, I just wanna understand. I'm an immigrant myself, so this is a single-family zone. Uh, we've talked about that this was not allowed because this is the water source there. Do the owner, property, property owners in this single-family zone, do those people have rights? And how do they make sure that those, how do we protect those rights? And how do we make sure that our, our voice is heard? As I'm saying, professionally, we are not that, um, prepared for battles like that, you know, we did not anticipate this in our life. How do we defend ourselves? Pretty much, this is the question for the board, and pretty much, I just wanna know the legal, is this all pointless? Because it's taken a lot of stress. We do not want this. Pretty much, we just wanna know if, uh, if our voice, uh, of what we submitted, and many people are busy, it's really sad to see that people right away say that it's not gonna matter anything which we ask of the administration of this town. So pretty much, we just wanna know what toll it's gonna take on our health and how many more specific meetings we're gonna have to come, and who do we talk to in regards to our rights? What's gonna be the answer to us? Pretty much. I understand, this is a beautiful plan, we just do not like it for our interest as well, and we do not think this is in the interest of the town and in the interest of the planet either, not just us living in this neighborhood.
Well, your voice is being heard by this board and by the other board, you spoke in front of the ZBA. As far as your legal rights, I'm not an attorney, I can't answer that question. That sounds like a question for a lawyer.
For a lawyer?
Yeah.
So, pretty much, the answer is we should hire a lawyer for our rights to be heard?
Or? I can't, I can't tell you what your rights are as an individual property owner, I don't even know what mine are. That's a question I can't answer either as a board chairman or as a citizen, I just don't know.
Okay. Okay. I thought that this, you would be the management of us, that you would know the answer to this question.
Well, I don't.
All right. So, you were saying it's only legal ways for us which are open, it's only the lawyer who would be able to know if we do have any rights in regards to that?
That's what I would do as a private citizen.
So, we have to pay money the same, even though we were kind of put into this battle? We do not want this battle in our life. So, how many more meetings do we have to come to?
Well, let's see, you've got, the ZBA's coming up on the 20th, that is the 20th, I looked it up on the website, I was mistaken. Let's see, what else have we got on our end?
We have our next meeting, June, July 13th. And after that, it's hard to know what's gonna transpire at the next meeting, whether the public hearings will be continued again, whether the board will make a decision then, it's, we don't know. So, we have at least one more meeting with this project and the two special permits on the agenda. And I'm not sure what the board's gonna do tonight when we get into our regular meeting after this public meeting.
Pretty much, what I'm gonna, what I wanted to say is that we wanna trust that maybe there are a lot of people who wish, but they cannot participate because, you understand, it's kind of like gives us, gives us an idea that it's not like, I'm not, I understand it's not, but it looks like it's created to kind of cut the civic engagement because we just do not have the resources to stand up to that. But I'm thinking that if the city wanted to know the public opinion, you could do an anonymous questionnaire or something mailed out, not from like us or the hospital, but from the city authorities, to see what the people think in this neighborhood or the whole town. Pretty much, we just wanna count, we just wanna count that our petition and the whole voice of all of our neighborhood will be heard.
That's what the process is about. As I said, this is the only process that the United States government has given us to utilize for this, for these types of things, so that's what we're here for.
Okay, thank you. Another thing, a short statement I wanted to say is that traffic is really awful and traffic is the same concern. As I'm saying, we are not, me and my kids, we cannot speak in the street outside. We love to spend time there, but neither with the neighbors or just to ourselves, we have to stand and wait, either yell or have to stand and wait till the cars pass. People coming down from the forty-five, forty miles an hour zone into our stretch and it's hard, I guess, for people to kind of change their speed right away. Make sure I remember everything. A small question. So, with the addition of the surgical units, how many, I'm not sure, maybe I did not hear what, maybe Emma asked that similar question. How many more employees are you planning to employ with the addition of the surgical units?
So, right now, the situation in our surgical current unit is such that we can't continue services there, so we're moving it. We're closing the one we have now and moving it to this new one. So, majority of the employees are going to be the same, employees that are already working there, but there would be additional side jobs, we don't have the exact numbers, but we have four ORs right now and we're building six.
Four what?
Four operating rooms right now and we're building.
How many, how many rooms, how many employees you're planning to employ?
So, maybe for the operating room alone, maybe additional twenty to forty employees.
So, connected question, so why are we doing so many more parking spots in connection with twenty or forty employees, which I do not even think is gonna be forty, closer to twenty probably? Right, so why? Just to make it look lavish, no matter of?
So, when you add, when you add services, okay, and you add employees, you end up having more, you know, I'm not, I think the employee count may actually be a little high from that perspective. So, the four operating rooms right now, they're, they're, they're undersized and they can only accommodate certain types of procedures. And what happens is because of that, the surgical day goes longer than what it's going right now, when it's normally going. So, now you take and you put in six state-of-the-art operating rooms, your surgical day will shrink back down to what it should be, a regular ten, twelve-hour day. And you can now do more processes within there. So, the additional twenty, thirty employees would also add the ability to bring in more patients. So, the twenty to thirty employees that you would get for additional parking, you now need to accommodate potentially because the surgical sessions don't last all day. So, a person will come in, have a surgical procedure done, they might get there at six in the morning and leave at ten, okay? Like, that's a car coming in, parking for that, for that patient and then leaving, and then another patient might come in at seven, another patient might come in at eight, another patient might come in at nine. So, that this, all the surgical sections are staggered through the process. So, what ends up happening is you need now for that, that day, you need an extra, you know, you might need twenty spaces for employees, but you need another twenty, thirty spaces for each surgical room within there. So, that's part of the concern about how the, how the parking areas increase. And there's already a deficiency of parking from what people are feeling on the site, okay? These are, these are not things that I've, I have no, no, I've never, never really been to Heywood as a, as a medical requirement, but from what I'm being told by building department, by staff, is that there's, there's a need for parking on the site, which is why we're adding additional parking.
We did a parking study, also the hospital did a parking study of the current parking situation, and that study showed that we are undersized, we don't have enough parking spots for the current patients.
Well, currently, you actually have another, one of your dis-multi-directional and disjointed parking lots, which is empty. The one which is next one with the separate entrance there, it's constantly empty, so we're not seeing this used. And thank you for your answer, but last meeting you did say that, last meeting you did say that the proposed parking lot is mostly for staff and employees, not the patients.
Yeah, what we're claiming on is that this parking area back here would be for employees. So, we're gonna look at designating that as employee parking and that this would be for patients and visitors, okay? That's part of the plan.
So, pretty much, it's done for the convenience of people, right? So that they can just go into this entrance. It's just one of the things, lavish points, people, I believe people are absolutely fine walking in there, in the current main entrance which you have. This is just one of the lavish additions you're planning to have.
Well, that's your opinion.
Yes, it's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone further from the public? Mr. Rockwood?
I was sort of trying to wait to be last, but since the gentleman left, I will speak now. Stephen Rockwood, 310 Pearl Street in Gardner.
Laura Shores.
I, I am not in a butter to this project, but I am in a butter to another large project in the city. So, some of these questions and points kind of come back to another project and kind of just looking for some clarification. Mr. Hannigan, I did see your presentation at the zoning board and unfortunately, I was not able to go to the Heywood meeting. I would have liked to have gone to that, but I was committed to something else that night. So, you have answered a lot of the questions that I had, but I just wanna put them kind of on record that someone is asking about them so that we just do have a full record. I guess, stormwater first. It sounds like you do have plans for this infiltration system maintenance as a long-term and regular thing, and I guess there's regulations for that, that it has to be done and it needs to have records made long-term, so.
That's all part of the, basically, the city.
That wasn't quite clear from the zoning board, so I'm glad that you did that for us. You have any idea what the lifetime of this type of infiltration system is?
It, it, a lot of that depends upon maintenance. Maintenance is extremely important. If it's, if it's maintained properly, I would, I would estimate fifty years is not an outside-the-box number. I think by that time, there would be some degradation in the piping and the connections relative to the site around the catch bases and manholes that would need some repair and replacement. I, I don't, I think that we have inspection, there are inspection ports on the system itself so that we can monitor the stone, if stone gets backed up and you basically have to clean the system up and replace it. So, fifty is probably a generous number, but I don't think it's five, and I don't think it's ten, I think it's much more than that.
So, so the better we take care of the system, the longer it's gonna last?
It'll last probably longer than fifty if we take care of it properly.
Okay. You have water quality units and deep sumps and hood, so everything you can do to keep the crap from getting in there?
Correct.
More crap that gets in there, the worse it will perform.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's all part of the maintenance schedule as well.
Okay. That, that became more clear tonight, I just wanted to reiterate. Noise. So, at some point, you're gonna start some normal construction, you'll have bulldozers, loaders, excavators and such, so there'll be some level of normal construction noise. I, I didn't hear blasting before, but I heard blasting tonight, so there'll be some requirements Given the amount of ledge that you expect beyond the blasting, do you expect to be on-site for a long period with basically jackhammers and the excavator-type jackhammers?
That depends upon the hardness, integrity of the rock system. You can, you can go in and blast and that is like a process that goes a lot quicker than using hammering. But hammering is very loud and it's very slow. So, my gut feeling is that we would end up blasting. The only way you would hammer is if the rock was basically like, they refer to as schist, and you wouldn't even really need to hammer that, you could probably always excavate that stuff out because it's relatively, it's weathered rock versus hard rock. We've done some borings, but we haven't done borings to the point of testing the ledge for that. But the ledge that I've seen on-site, I would say that we're probably gonna be doing more blasting than hammering.
Okay. The, the other project that I'm very familiar with has been breaking up rock now for about seven months. And I'm not that close to it, so it, I hear it, but it's not like it's overpowering. But I'm a thousand feet from that site, where you're talking a couple hundred feet for the folks in this neighborhood.
Right, so the blasting obviously has to take place with, through the fire department, they monitor that, there'll be some sort of a pre-blast survey done as part of the whole process. I'm not that familiar with that process, but I know that it does exist and does occur.
Yeah, it's all part of the blasting plan that's under the auspices of the fire department. Yeah, and, and I've actually seen blasting at my previous place of employment where they were putting in a, a new housing development and they were in there and they were blasting for about a month. They'd do a couple of blasts a day. And that wasn't too terrible, other than the building went like this. Okay.
So, just to complete the picture of your question, just to complete the picture of your question, once the rock is blasted, we have to dig it out, depending upon its hardness, once again, we'll be able to either crush it right there with the excavators or part of that process, or we'd have to bring a crusher and actually perform the crushing operation. What we, what would typically happen is that they would, they would dig out an area, blast, dig out an area, accumulate a large volume of rock to be crushed and come in for a couple days and do all the crushing that they would even do. And then they might have to come back and do it again, okay? So, it wouldn't be, then we wouldn't be doing a, a six-month crushing operation on the site.
So, it'll run in cycles?
It'll run in cycles, correct. And the whole part of it being phased anyways, I probably said that a little bit, but essentially, we need to keep this section of the building, we need to keep this area open, obviously for operational purposes. So, this area here would be not, would remain the same essentially, and we basically would start working our way back to this part of site and doing all the, all the clearing and rock removal in this area here. A lot of the interior that would be, would be blasted and crushed, we're actually gonna be reinserted to make the fill grade up in this area here. And we'd get to about this point and then we would flip and we would have access around the site now versus going through the site and then the building construction would start. So, we're anticipating that the site construction portion of the project, the majority of the site construction will be done in, in six to nine months, that's really what we're looking at. And maybe that we're at that point and we have the pavement down, but we don't have the landscaping done, we don't have the berms in, we don't have the stuff painted yet, but that's really the cleanup work once all the major work is done. But I would say the major work done in six months and then the final, the finished work done over the next three, two, three months, not very accurate. Get that, I think that's part of what you're asking us for.
Okay, that, that was a concern, how long that was gonna go on.
Yeah.
And your goal?
The building construction will take about two years.
Yeah, there's requirements on the building that are different from, from the, say, the And your goal would be to keep most of this material on-site rather than to be carting it out and then carting something else back?
It's gonna be truck traffic back and forth in the site because of the fact that we, we're not, we're not setting up a concrete plant up here, we're not gonna set up an asphalt plant. So, we will be bringing in asphalt, we'll be bringing in concrete, we'll be bringing in sand, we'll be bringing in crushed rock that is imported, and we will be hauling some stuff off-site. We've tried to put an estimate on that, but without knowing the, the rock quantity that we'll be dealing with, it's, it's difficult to do so. Right now, including a blast factor, I think we used about point three or point four, Chris, on the blasted rock, we're at about a thousand yards of export, okay? So, that's not bad.
That's not bad.
Okay? And that's over the, over the life of the project.
Okay, now, that's, that's not, not too bad. It's just a matter of understanding what we're actually gonna be doing.
Right.
Okay, dust, and it sounds like you've got a plan for water trucks and such to try and keep the dust down. At the entrances where you'll be having trucks coming in and out, are you going to put any kind of a platform in there of crushed stone to try and knock all the material off the trucks?
That is one of the instructions we're doing, yeah, there's an entry pad for the construction vehicles, yeah. Sweeping as required of the main streets as we're working throughout the construction period, yeah, that's all part of the.
Yes, we've had very good work on Pearl Street with the, with the sweepers, they've done really well other than a couple of days and can't complain about that. And then that stone will be renewed on a regular basis as required?
As needed, yeah.
Okay.
Showing the details.
Okay, traffic, it sounds like there'll be an increase in patient traffic and that's good for you folks. The few, a few more as far as employees, it sounds like the operational delivery of trucks coming in and out is gonna go up, but just a small amount to support a small increase in the operating rooms.
I think to start with, it will stay the same because we are closing existing hours. Eventually, it will grow slowly, incrementally, but to start with, it's going to be.
The truck traffic should remain about the same.
Yeah, that's, that's what I figured, there'll be a small, a small rise over time as that new surgical area gets fully implemented. And then you've already discussed the construction-related traffic, so that's fine. And then you've already discussed the construction-related traffic, so that's fine. It sounds like you're looking at doing some robust landscaping, which was, I couldn't really see that at the zoning meeting.
That wasn't that.
Ah, okay. It looks pretty good from the Woodland Avenue side. As far as the south end toward the first house, how is that going to be?
So we're looking at putting a separate run of landscape screening right in this area, along with wrapping this around, so he kind of has a double. Who's talking, Dylan's right here, we're talking about that as well.
That looks like a lot more than what had been on the previous thing that we've seen.
The previous one is here, the landscape site plan versus the landscape planting plan. The landscape site plan, what I'm doing here is basically designating what areas on the property are parking and maneuvering. And that then goes into our calculation to determine how many square meters of land area we have to have for landscaping. So this basically is to provide compliance with the ordinance relative to the amount of landscaping, and this is actually providing much more landscaping than this is showing, but we try to break it up in those two elements to make sure we have it both covered. Because we don't want to show a great plan and then have it not compliant.
Okay, at some point, will there be a clerk of the works on-site?
Yes.
For the abutters and such to bring up items that have become of concern?
Yeah, we're going to have, Dawn's here with community outreach, basically, and we're going to be doing, as part of where we are now, we're going through the process, getting the permits squared away. Once the permit's squared away, we'll move into design, construction-level documents. We'll get those bid out and get those documents squared away. We'll have a pre-construction meeting with the city, and we'll have another pre-construction meeting with the neighbors and anybody else who would like to come from the public. And at that point, we'll introduce the construction team, they'll be passing out cards of who to contact for what purpose, a concern, or whatever. There'll be policing up and down, not by police, but there'll be staff from the construction company that go up and down the street to make sure things are kept clean, that there's no trash in the area, that there aren't tarp that have come off the construction site and blown into the neighborhood and stuff like that. So that's all part of the process that we deal with on the construction and the things.
And based on what I've seen, if you actually execute to these plans, things look pretty good. Just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
And I do want to thank you for presenting a couple of times here. It's been very informative. As to the board, I think the key thing here is going to be mitigation of these issues, and it sounds like the plans at this point are pretty good, but it would be nice to have conditions put in place to make sure that it's actually carried out long-term. Okay, thank you very much. Yes?
Steve, with regard to what? Conditions?
Well, just-
For what specific? Do you have any specific-
Well, just that we have something about the dust control.
Yeah, you're talking noise, dust?
Noise, dust, traffic, time of day that they're actually working.
Construction hours, sure.
Yeah. Those are just things that would come up with about any project, but it'd be nice to have conditions actually laid out so that the people who are doing it know what they're working to, from the standpoint of the city and this board.
Yeah, between the planning board and the ZBA, we'll definitely define that, yeah.
Yeah, at this point, I don't plan to speak in front of the ZBA. I figured this would be a better forum for the project as a whole. And I didn't really plan on speaking initially, but it came up a little short as far as people I thought were going to be here, so I figured that someone needs to put some of these things out there. Okay, thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Rockwood. Anything further from the public? Yes, sir. Your name and your street address, please?
My name's Don in Thoncombe. I'm living at 160 Woodland Ave.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm just right next door, right there where the entry is going to be. I noticed that there's a lot of constructing going on. My concern was that where the filter runs at the resort, where it's going to end, is there going to be a fence around there at this point?
Are you just naming this area right here?
Yes.
Yeah, probably not. It's not deep.
It's not deep?
No, it's only a foot, maybe a foot and a half deep. And it's no, the purpose of that is to slow the velocity down before it comes over.
Okay. So it's just that, my concern was that I have a young one.
Yeah.
I just don't want to, I could see from the layout from my backyard, it's at least about 30 feet from where that thing is going to be, so.
There are varying opinions. Now, this is not an detention basis.
Okay.
Okay, so this is the bottom of its line with stone. So the intention is the water will go in there and go through the bottom on most storms. And then if it's a bigger storm, it'll just basically slow the velocity down before it lets it go over the top. It's like a spillway like this, so it'll rise up and go over the top, and then the rest will go into the ground. So it should be gone within, you know, 12 to 14 or 24 hours of the storm ending, whatever water's in there. And there's a varying opinions on whether you should fence in detention bases. And I'm of the opinion that you don't, because I'm going to be 60 in a year and a half, and if I have to jump over a fence to get to someone who's in distress, it's going to be a show. Okay? So I personally don't like fencing them in, because if you have to get there, you want to get there quick. You don't want to fence anywhere.
Yeah, I see that, just in case.
And it's not, it's only, like I said, it's only 18 inches deep.
So that's going to maintain due to like winter, during the fall, like all the leaves and all the debris?
Yeah, that gets looked at. I think that, it's in the, I don't have it in front of me, but it's in the maintenance plan, I believe that that's spring and fall it gets maintained.
Okay.
Maybe four times a year. But the most things on this get maintained four times a year, except for the main drainage trunk lines, the manholes, they're usually annually, okay? But basically, catch bases are all always, and catch bases and the water quality devices are four times a year.
So on the main drain, do you have any kind of backup, just in case there's a power failure or something?
There's no power either.
No, okay.
It's all gravity.
All right, that's a good one. I just wanted to say, if something happened, you know, things would fall apart. Also, have the picture of how the town was looked like at 1882, and where the pictures show here, there's only two houses before the hospital was built. So, and after that, once the hospital was built, there was like seven houses from where I was living, there were seven houses where the parking going to be built. So how much more do they need to expand? Is my house going to be next? According to the picture here, 1882, there's only two houses before the whole town was, hospital wasn't even built. So where the reservoir is, Crystal Lake, behind the Crystal Lake, there used to be a campsite. Now it's cemetery. So you can see, as we go to the near future, all the houses been built up, and now it's been torn down for the hospital. So, and there's going to be a lot of parking lots being placed, and it's a lot of traffic safety-wise, there's a lot of kids leaving that street. So all my concern is that, you know, what's best for the community? I would say, my wife and I talk about it, what's best for the community, you know? It's good to have like the parking lot expanded if they need to, and it's job opportunity. That's what my wife and I was talking about. And also, the building need to build for the community, that's what matters. My wife and I was talking about that. So also, my question was, when is it going to start? The construction is going to start?
We don't know yet, but we're trying to look at this fall, late fall.
So-
Depending on how the process goes, and then from the final designs and stuff like that, so.
Okay.
And bear in mind that nothing's been approved by the boards yet.
Okay.
So this is not a, it will start on X date, we're rubber stamping it. No, we have to deliberate this site plan next. That's what we're doing next after this hearing.
So on top of it, when the sites start parking, is there going to be a fence or gate? That way, nobody could entry into the parking, so for safety-wise?
There'll be a fence, there'll be fencing during construction. There will not be fencing for, to close off the parking lot once it's built. There'll be, as I said earlier, there'll be some fencing along the frontage, mixed in with the landscaping for light penetration, but there won't be fencing through, the fence, the access to the parking lot is 24 hours, so.
All right. Well, that's answered my question. Usually, he asks all the questions, so my question was kind of short, so, all right? Thank you.
Thank you.
You should show him that picture.
Oh, okay. So this picture, this Central Park House, it was 1882, and this is the picture what it looked like back then in 1882.
Yeah, I've seen that.
So you can see that, that's where my house was, right about here. And there's no hospital here. So you can see the, that's my house right there, it's 160 Woodland Ave. And there's only two houses. And this is where the cemetery was, this used to be a campsite. So this is just the light, and you can tell right there, that's a golf course. So this is the Woodland, and this is the Green Street. So it's really interesting, it's really old since 1882. So the house is probably like 137 years old. So I kept this with me since I bought the house, so.
That's a great picture.
Yeah, it's nice.
You got one interesting picture?
Yeah, I was kind of half-dead at that.
Yeah.
May I have a question? May I have a question?
You have one more question?
He's done. Thank you. Are you done?
Yeah, he's finished.
Well, another interesting piece for me to hear, as you probably heard before, I'm really scared of the blasting and all this, how this process is going to be handled. My question is, what measures are you going to take to make sure that people are safe in the vicinity while you're going through this process?
The site will be surrounded by fencing, number one. Is it about the construction or the blasting?
I believe she's referring to the blasting.
Both. I'm sorry?
Both, or the blast?
Yeah.
Both.
So the blasting is actually monitored by the fire department. So when the contractor who is selected to build the project, when he runs into a ledge situation and he has to do blasting, he has to go to the fire department and get permits to do that. Okay? The fire department, then, this board doesn't review that, we're not involved with that. The fire department reviews that. Typically, what is done is they do what they call a pre-blast survey. Okay? So they would literally go around, depending upon the type of rock, and so these are all requirements I'm not real familiar with, but they actually may ask you, can we come in your house and video, take pictures of your house if they can see whether anything is damaged or gets damaged as part of the blasting process? Okay? And then if they do the blasting and there's a problem, then at least you have a record of, hey, there was not a crack over here on my blaster, now there is, and you guys did something. Then they send their people in to deal with that. But the type of blasting that they do and the level of blasting that they do now is significantly less and significantly more monitored than it was even 10 years ago. Okay? So, and I guess the gentleman over here, we talked about blasting, probably more about the blasting sequence than I do. But that's how that's handled through the fire department. With this, relative to construction-
Let me ask a question in regards to the first one, the first statement in regards to blasting. You are aware, even though there is progress, like in the last 10 years, as you're saying, you are aware that sometimes accidents do happen, and it is a potential risk?
Yeah.
And you are okay with this, that us taking this risk?
I could walk out of this building and get hit by a bus.
I'm sorry?
I could walk out of this building and get hit by a bus.
This is your own actions, but you are putting that risk on us, people living nearby.
Okay, so you're getting to the, I can't answer a question about something with blasting, okay, that has nothing to do with what I'm doing. If a blasting question, you would need to talk to the fire department about, and that's the form you need to bring the blasting about.
Well, you are the one who initiates that, right? And who's going to be to blame for us? Nobody wants we're going to be dead, right? I understand it's not a very 100%, I mean-
Nothing's 100%.
Yeah, but there is a chance of this, and I'm just wondering how you're willing to risk that? How are we supposed to live through that time there? I am not going to have, not just peace of mind, I'm not going to be able to sleep during this time. This is just, I am not even understanding how this can be a reality. We are talking about heavy rock, it's just across from the road there, this hill which you are trying to put away. How can you guarantee that the landslide is not going to happen? Sometimes exactly, like those, the pockets of soil, which is like not that solid, or our houses are so old. How are we even talking about this? I'm not understanding. So how is this purpose worth it?
These questions are questions I-
Yes, this is the questions which are not kind of-
Have you thought about leveraging your city councilor?
I'm sorry?
Have you spoken to your city councilor, your ward councilor, or your councilor-at-large about some of these concerns, about blasting and fire department involvement?
Who should I speak to? Could you advise me?
I don't know who your councilor is. Does anyone? You would know, Steve.
Over here, here would be Elizabeth Kazinskas, the council president.
Is she in Ward 2?
Ward 2, yes.
Elizabeth, floor 2? In the city of-
Yeah, you're in Ward 2, so your councilor would be Elizabeth Kazinskas.
Kazinskas, thank you.
Or any councilor at large.
Or any councilor at large, yes.
I'm sorry, I'm so not informed and... Thank you. And then the second question I wanted to ask, actually, I kind of got lost in the, sorry, being a woman, it's a little complicated issues for me. So you are saying that, it's getting back to the water question. So you are saying that the water is supposed, the groundwater, which is going to be like the remains of the water, as you're saying, the ones which are going to be going in the ground, that those are going to be going towards the lake and not towards our houses, right? Which is neither good, nor the lake, nor our houses. But I believe you, if maybe I misheard, you were saying something that the water actually flies, flows beyond our houses, along the Green Street, and then it goes into the water? No? I remember something you said, I believe, on a Zoom meeting. I was-
That was at a previous meeting?
Yeah.
That was about the watershed?
Yes.
So the watershed, we, we abut-
The ZBA.
This is a forum for zone, that's zone A. Zone B is anything within a half a mile of the bank.
And what is zone B?
Zone B, it's half a mile.
Zone B is the proposed parking lot, right?
No, zone B is in, the parking lot is in zone B.
Yes.
Not in zone A. Over here, okay, underneath Matthew Street, there's a wetland area over here that circles back around and goes, drains into the Crystal Lake, on the other side of Green Street. Okay? That's not related to what we're in. What I did say about that is that this tributary to the watershed is also protected, but because of the fact that it's not the actual water supply, it's a tributary to it, the zone is only 200 feet over here versus 400 feet. But it's way off of where we're doing any work. Okay? So that's where, I think that's where you asked about, that was surface water, not groundwater. Okay?
So you are saying 100% that your groundwater will go, will be going towards the lake and not towards this watershed, right?
The hill goes this way?
Mm-hmm.
And I'm going to say, I'm going to use this word, the presumption is that the groundwater follows the slope of the land.
Again, this is the presumption, right?
So that goes that way. And you're on this side, this is above the ridge, it goes this way to this other wetland area, which also drains into the reservoir, but it's, the level of protection of that under both state and local control is much less to the actual watershed itself. Doesn't mean it's not protected, it's just protected differently.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Chris, did I get that right?
Anything further?
I have one more question.
You name and street address for the record again, because we're being recorded.
Okay, my name's Don in Thoncombe, 160 Woodland Ave. Since all the- Since all the house been torn down, according to the map that I have here, it's almost as big as the parking lot of the hospital, so you could see that right there. So, and this is the, this is where I live, this is the map, and these are the houses. So you could see that my property is almost half-size of the parking lot. So this, the house I have left, for the town, would there anybody down in the near future that this gonna, the town will offer me to buy the house? Give up my house just for extra parking, down the line?
Mr. Chairman, I, I believe this individual is, is, he might be a little nervous that Hayward can just take over his property, do whatever they want. I believe the other houses you seen there, way back in the future, Hayward probably bought them, and once they bought them, they probably demolished them and did what they had to do. But Hayward has no, um, law to come to your house and kick you out, and, and take your home away from you, sir, if that's what you're concerned about.
What my concern about was, my concern was about, is, is that, I have, my house is the only one left, out from all the, the parking lots gonna be built, and it's pretty big property here, and if I happen to put up my house for sale, the values of the price can go down.
That's what you're saying?
Due to the fact of the parking lot and the traffic, is, that's what I'm trying to say, is, any way that, you know, maybe we could fix the, 'cause the town have the, um, parking going on, right around here, so, the value of my house, if I have to put on the market, it's not gonna hold its value, due to the traffic and all the hospital and all that stuff. So I thought maybe somewhere down the future, down the line, if they need happen to, need extra parking, would they be coming knocking on the door, hey, you know, since seven houses just went by, and mine's the only one, you know, so that's why I'm trying to say, would anywhere down near future would-
We should be talking to those two people right there.
No way of addressing that.
We, we talked about this at the neighborhood meeting, and I, and I think the concern, if I'm, and I, I, I know you and I talked about it briefly, the concern is, if I'm reading through the lines, whether Hayward could just come over and say, like you said, I wanna buy your house, so you have to leave. They can't do that. You have the right to sell your house to whomever you want, or not sell it to whomever you want.
You have some right to say no.
You know, and, and, um, so the city has a process called eminent domain, that they could take your house to public purpose, okay? But there's gotta be a value for that, from the city's perspective, and right now, there is none. So I know you're concerned about-
This isn't a city project.
Right, it's not a city project.
Yeah, so that, that's, that's not applicable, so we shouldn't even go down there, right?
So, the, the concern you have about what, what Hayward did, they're lawfully allowed to do that, they're lawfully allowed to buy houses along the street, and tear them down, and build a parking lot. For them to do that, they have to get certain permits, which is what we're doing. We need cycling and pools from this board, because we're in the watershed, we also need a, a special permit for work within the watershed, with show compliance for that, they're having that peer review to one with the city engineer review. With the zoning board, it's really about the use of the property. And the use of the property extends back to, to 1907, when the property was originally conveyed to Hayward Hospital, okay? 1907, 1910, somewhere in that range, okay? So zoning didn't exist at that point in time. There was no residential zone, there was no industrial zone, there was no commercial zone, they didn't exist. It wasn't until the early part of this century, that the state came in and said, we wanna create these laws to say, over here's okay for industrial, and over here's okay for residential. What happened in this particular case was, they said this is all residential, but the hospital was already there. So their use, which is the hospital, the medical office, and those types of uses, is, is essentially grandfather, okay? They can then, so they can operate with, with, with what they have right now, and with a special permit from the ZBA, they can expand the use, expand the building, to do the same uses that they are, that they have preserved rights under the zoning laws. So that's kinda how it happens, if the hospital was there, I wanna say it was in the, in the 30s or 40s, is when zoning started to happen in Massachusetts, okay? And, and so, the latest zoning is from 2018, I believe, and that's all still residential, it didn't change zone. To answer your question, we're not changing the zoning district, we're expanding a pre-existing non-conforming use, that's protected, because of the fact that it predates the zoning, alright?
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
That's it.
Thank you.
Alright. I declare this public meeting closed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, let's transition directly into the, uh, planning board. Definitive site plan, Hayward Hospital expansion. Gentlemen of the board, there's still some gaps in this plan, landscaping and, uh, landscaping planting jumps out at me. Trevor, you have some notes on that also? There's also an issue of, uh-
Yeah, it's more landscaping.
Traffic signages.
Traffic signage. Yeah, on the site, so I think we're still working on a final plan, a final plan set. Um, there could be more feedback at other, at, at future meetings. Couple things, Mr. Chairman, if I might-
Please.
-about the project. We didn't talk about a parking plan for, um, for the construction timeline, so the hospital needs, in the, in the past, when you went through an expansion project, you've utilized parking along Green Street, and, so we need to-
We've already discussed it, and now, which is, we're gonna be, um, providing parking in the shuttle service back.
Will there be any parking on Green Street itself?
No, not, it's not permitted.
Okay.
If it's permitted right now, then-
It's not permitted, but it's been permitted in the past, during a construction phase.
So, we've, we haven't, we didn't actually-
But that needs to be-
We had a conversation with-
That needs to be addressed ahead of time, that's why I'm bringing it up now, so.
So, so, uh, I believe there's a, a floor of meetings going back, and we've now, we've got, so, relative to construction parking, what I, what I'd like to do is get together with, um, the company that, that, we have a company lined up for the construction project, and outline, amazing, so that you can see not only where we're gonna be working, but where the construction vehicle is gonna be parked during construction, which we on-site, okay? Um, so it's gonna be phased, obviously, it's gonna be ramping up, to get to the point where you have a lay-down area for equipment, where you have an area that's available for parking, for construction vehicles, et cetera, during the construction phase, okay? That's already been kind of mapped out, so it's not gonna take that long to get that back to-
So all, all I'm talking about, Bill, is, is, um, parking off-site during the construction. So if you, if you do plan on having that as part of the plan, I would recommend you run it through the, uh, deputy chief-in-chief of the police department, so they're aware. And also, I would also, um, you know, like the board to have a say in that, and have it be part of the final decision, if, if you're gonna be parking off-site during the construction. And that's employees, public, things like that.
Yeah, so, during construction, obviously, for certain parts of the hospital, the, the linear is not gonna be available, you're saying, if I keep reading correctly, where are those people gonna park?
Correct.
During the day. That's the shuttle service back and forth.
Okay, okay.
That's what you're asking for?
Yeah.
Do you want some sort of a letter for that? There's nothing I can put, put on the plan itself like that.
I don't think so, I, I mean, it's up to the board, really, but I, I'm just saying if, if there's gonna be parking on Green Street, on public, on a public roadway, during construction, where there typically is not parking, then it needs to be addressed now. But if there's not gonna be, then we don't need to address it.
Yeah, if there's gonna be some-
As long as you have a plan in place.
Yeah, if there's gonna be some shuttle arrangement, then that's fine by us.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
They did offer the, on, side of the street parking, when they put the solar panels up in the parking lot, on the north side, and they put it out there for breathing.
And also, over there, um, because that's right, where it already existed, I think it's better off, we, we've already talked about this internally, we think that the shuttle service is the best option.
Safer.
And, and, and most of that will be employees, so the employees will park over the amount, and be shut back and forth, making right. And that way, that way, there's the space that are available, open for the, for the patients and visitors.
One other thing, Mr. Chairman, if I might, um, snow storage, Bill, on the landscape plan that you provided in the plan set, you show a lot of snow storage within landscaped areas.
Correct.
So make sure you're not providing snow storage in landscaped areas, and I'm making up the open space part of your design, so it's not, it's not, it's not permitted.
Right, so it's, oh, it's gonna be some, it's gonna be, there's some, what we did-
So you need to show those calculations, though.
They are on the drawing plans.
Yeah. As long as those calculations don't include those snow storage areas, you'll be all set.
Yeah. So this plane right here, has the, the calculation right here.
Yeah.
And this is, as I said, this is the compliance document versus the planting one, 'cause we'll, like, for instance, one thing we're changing already, is this is no longer, it's no storage, because we're putting that, that screen in for the neighborhood here.
Yeah.
Okay, so, but there's a difference between the area required for planting, and area that's also landscaped above and beyond the landscape requirements, and that's kinda what we're working with at this point. But you're, I know what you're saying, though, you don't, you don't want-
I'm just bringing out your attention.
No, but I think one of the things we, we could and should add to the plan, um, not to, not to the landscape plan, but to the, we should add, or I, I would suggest that we add, snow storage areas in the parking that are temporary in nature, so that we can say, we're gonna store snow, we're gonna store snow here, 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 and here, along the ways, and then within 48 hours, it has to be removed. 'Cause that will prevent, what we've, and we talked to Frank about this at the, at the, um, Frank Kowalski is the, uh, facilities manager, he was at the neighborhood meeting, and I think, you know, you guys that were there at the meeting, we talked about the fact that, um, we, we want, we, we wanna, we want the board to understand that we're going to pile snow up during the storm events in the parking area, in the parking spaces, and that will have a timeframe, and I usually say 48 hours, within 48 hours of the, after the end of the storm, the snow will, will be, will be trucked off-site and disposed of appropriately, okay?
So that needs to be shown in the plan, that, that the planning board ends up approving.
Okay, and how we have to do it?
The plan set, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Lastly, Bill, I just, a quick, no, I, I don't, I, I don't have a problem with that fence they have up now, I think it looks decent, it's probably, I think it's fairly new. But we may wanna look at fencing versus guardrail, along with the vegetation, so I think the guardrail may fit in better with the vegetation itself, along, along the barrier on Woodland Ave.
You're saying, on the inside of this, put the guardrail, which will happen to be at headlight height?
Correct, rather than putting the fence up, but again, it looks better than the stock, the stockade fences only last so long, so long. Um, and then, if you're putting, if you're putting the, I don't know, putting the stockade fence on the inside of the, uh, planting.
I wouldn't-
Well, that's what's there now, that's-
Yeah, but, we, we, we'll do a couple things with this discussion about the fencing, we're gonna talk to the landscape architect, we're gonna talk to the, um, the developer, okay, to see what they, what they wanna do. But the point that you're trying to make is valid, and, and just so you guys can see what, what he's saying, is that, when we first plant this, it's not gonna feel the way it is right now. So what Trevor had, and I talked about earlier today, was putting a fence along this whole side, because that's what's out there right now, none of us really like the look of that in general, but it would cut the lights off.
Yeah.
The, um, the other thought would be to put just a typical timber guardrail along that section, which will do a couple of things, one, we would probably set it back to five feet to allow the snow storage, and it would also protect the plants.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think that that's a good discussion.
Alright, that's all I had as well. Uh, gentlemen on the board, I don't think we're in a position to vote on anything tonight.
No.
Because we're not ready for primetime on this plan yet.
I'm sorry, I didn't see it, it stayed.
Just pretty much the same thing as the operational maintenance landscaping, I was questioning as far as the snow stacking and packing that is maintained, so that we don't lose the landscaping in one year, because of the stove, the, uh, stuff. How about the detention basin up, up at the fire end?
This, this little one?
Yeah, is that something that should be maintained also?
It's part of the maintenance, please, it's really, it's really just a velocity disperator, more than anything, it's not really a detention basin, it, it has no credit with the, with the, um, with the, with the calculations. So in other words, we could just put, we could eliminate that, just put a riprap pad, but we're trying to just add a little bit of extra, um, safety relative to velocity reduction, so we don't have erosion going down the hill.
Um, one other question I have, the site lighting plan, that, uh, that's going to be provoked, part of the, uh, neighborhood plan was because of someone changing the light bulbs, and increasing the power and so forth, have it so it's maintained at the level of, that's-
So just to bring the rest of the board up to speed on that, during the meeting, um, with the neighborhood, uh, someone from the neighborhood brought up that they were, they put the, the lighting in, in the area that exists for parking right now, and that, you know, the first time that they came, first time that they, that the light bulbs went out, they replaced it with lights, like three times as bright as this. Okay, so, so the lights that are in this existing parking area, maybe went out, and I'm using numbers, but started off at a, at a 100-watt bulb, and ended up being like a thousand-watt bulb at the end of the day. The lights that we're providing in here, one, they're LED, so they last a long time, and two, when you replace them, you replace them with the component that comes with that light, you can't just change the bulb.
Yeah, it's a standard fixture.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
And the last thing, is in case of the spill or contamination, is that written in part of the service plan?
Yeah, it's not yet, but it's what we're doing, we're waiting for the peer review to come back, for all the comments to come back, and we're gonna put together a whole package that will address, hopefully address everything that comes in front of this board, as well as the ZBA.
Okay, and then, just the hours after that, construction hours.
Yeah, construction hours, yours will be specified. It's gonna be specified.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Gormier. Anything more? Your arms, oh, yeah, our next meeting is, uh, our next regular meeting is Tuesday, July 13th, and we've got, uh, one with the city council coming up on the 6th.
Yes.
Just one?
One, correct. On the 6th?
Yeah.
It's joint public hearing.
Joint public hearing, yes.
Right, okay.
And then our regular meeting on the 13th.
Yep.
7:00 AM, on the 6th.
I sent the email today, Bob, on that. I know you got it.
Yeah.
Make a motion, we adjourn?
Yeah. Motion, motion is made and seconded to adjourn by voice vote, all those in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passed, thank you very much.